Call meeting to order. I'll read the statement. Adequate notice of this public meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome our residents here this evening. I'll read the first order of business. MS Coast-to-Coast Bike Ride, May twentieth, twenty seventeen.
Right, the MS Coast-to-Coast Bike Ride, which starts at Sandy Hook and goes all the way down to Cape May touches upon a brief area in Lacy Township. They come down western and from western they go back out through Lakeside Drive south all the way down until they get to Ware Town and go further there. So they just need permission to allow them to go through our township. They do provide me with a certificate of insurance. It's very well maintained, run, and all the safety crews are there with them, so we don't have to get any involvement. Just need a motion to approve.
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Item number two, Bamber Lake East Playground Equipment.
Okay, I have some actual color photos better than this. A Bamber Lake has two sections of its park. It has an east and a west side, and we do have some playground equipment there. Very antiquated, outdated playground equipment. It is not the poly-coated equipment at all. It is the old metal equipment, and we're suggesting to remove it for insurance purposes, because we do have the west side, so we do want to remove the east side. I'm not saying I'm going to give it up for, in perpetuity, but at this time, we think for safety precautions, we do need to remove that equipment. You know, it's rusting very bad. There's a lot of the screws and stuff that you don't need to be fixed, so we'd rather remove it.
Well, in light of the circumstances, it seemed like this equipment held up pretty well.
The old metal ones, yes, compared to the other ones, yes.
Maybe we've started a trend here, and Lacy can go backwards with this stuff.
There you go. That's an excellent suggestion.
It's out of insurance compliance, that's for sure, and that's what we're worried about if somebody should get hurt or cut on it, you know?
That is bad insurance companies.
So I just, before Casey goes out and removes it, I told him that it really should be a decision of the governing body, just in case the public does have any outcry on it.
I agree. I don't want to see anybody get hurt.
Right, no, but if it's hurt, but then what are we going to do?
We have playground equipment on the other side.
No, I understand that. I'm worried about just an open beach type thing.
Well, it's a beach there now.
Oh, is it? Like, we put a light mark on the other side?
We have an east beach and a west beach, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, all right, that was my concern, is we just have an open beach there.
Yeah, the other side is.
Yes.
You know, we've got real problems.
I took a ride out there after Case.
We do have guards out there. Nobody ever used the beach for the most part, but we happen to cover it, so.
All right, so we'll have Casey remove that on a non-snowy day.
Motion, please. Move it. Second?
Okay.
Aye.
We're going to skip that, and we're going to go right to township.
We're going to go right to the township meeting. Motion to adjourn this meeting. Move it. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
All right, I'm ready to go.
Okay, caucus meeting, Township of Lacy, February ninth, twenty seventeen. I'll read the statement. Adequate notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We do salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number one, Resolution twenty seventeen seventy-nine authorizing the employment of a full-time police dispatcher.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Matthew Bender as a full-time public safety telecommunicated trainee for the Lacy Township Police Department.
Move it. Second?
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes. Item number two, Resolution twenty seventeen dash eighty, authorizing the employment of a seasonal laborer.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of a snow season laborer for the Department of Public Works. This is a high school student who will be called in when we need them to shovel the sidewalks and so on and so forth around our public facilities. It's just for this winter season, and if he does a good job, he may be invited back for our summer season.
With your pleasure? Move it. Second?
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Curtolo?
Yes. Item number three, Resolution twenty seventeen eighty-one, authorizing the employment of a part-time plumbing subcode official.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of Russell W. Peterson as a part-time plumbing subcode official for the Township of Lacy. This is a temporary substitute on an as-needed basis.
Motion? Move it. Second?
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Curtolo?
Yes. Item number four, Resolution twenty seventeen eighty-two, authorizing an inter-local service agreement with the county of Ocean.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local services agreement with the county of Ocean for the child restraint program grant. This is a reimbursement program grant with the county of Ocean. We have gotten this in the past. This is for us to hold various safety seats inspections and open houses to make sure that our residents have their child safety seats in their cars, and the county will reimburse us quarterly on these programs.
Entertainer motion. Move it. Second?
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Curtolo?
Yes. Item number five, Resolution twenty seventeen eighty-three, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curtolo?
Yes. Item number six, Resolution twenty seventeen eighty-four, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, three hundred, fourteen thousand, seven hundred, sixty-five dollars and fifty-four cents.
Move it. Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curtolo?
Yes. Item number seven, month of reports.
For the month of January, the municipal clerk's office reported receipts the amount of nineteen thousand, six dollars and three cents. For the month of January, the community development department reported receipts the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. For the month of December, the community development department reported receipts the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and nine cents. For the month of December, the municipal court office reported receipts the amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. For the month of January, road open permits were reported in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, recycling commodities in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Item number eight, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of January twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen. Move it. Second? All in favor? Aye. Item number nine, motion to approve township meeting minutes of January twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen. Move it. Second? All in favor? Aye. Item number ten, motion to approve raffle licenses for the Lacy Girl Softball Nights of Columbus and Lacy Elk's Charitable Foundation. Move it. Second? All in favor? Aye. We have one add-on this evening.
Yes, it's a resolution number eighty-five. It's a resolution of Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, New Jersey, authorizing the creation of the Township's Plan Endorsement Citizens Advisory Committee. The Township is pursuing plan endorsement, and in accordance with the guidelines of the plan endorsement plan, the Township must create a citizens advisory committee of at least five members, and they are in certain categories. There must be a member of the governing body, that would be Gary Quinn; a class-four member of the planning board is Josephine Whitley; a member of another local board or commission, which is Christopher Dasty of our Economic Development Commission; and two members of the public, one will be Charles Kennas and one is James Noller.
Motion, please. Move it. Second?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yourself? Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mayor Curtolo.
Yes.
And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Juliano?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things, I'll be brief. Number one, Fort River Methodist Church, this Sunday, February twelfth, be celebrating their tenth year anniversary in the church down there.
Pretty, it went quick, didn't it?
Went fast. I know.
Ten years?
Yeah, ten years. I was speaking to Pastor Applegate. They're having a little bit of celebration, a brunch down at the Captain's Inn. I think it was ten dollars.
Yes.
Right? It's ten dollars for anybody that wanted to go to support them. Bayfront Park, I don't know if anybody's come past there, it's coming along well. I hope the weather don't put us behind the eight ball a little bit, but I don't think it will. I think we're going to keep on moving ahead. Has anybody been down there to take a glance at it?
I was down there, I was down there about three weeks ago.
Coming along?
I haven't, I'm going to stop back down.
And then the walkway, if you really went onto the Bayfront Beach there, you could see the walkway, how it's coming about. Today, fortunately, Lacy did not get what they predicted. I think that's a great thing. I think we thought we were going to get hammered with eight to ten, twelve inches of snow. It didn't happen. It was still cold, and it's icy out there, but we didn't get what we had. Other than that, oh, this last weekend, I did my first swearing-in as deputy mayor, because Mayor Curtolo couldn't make it, so I did the Lacy Township Underwater Rescue and Recovery Team. It was a great affair. Like I said before, all of our volunteers deserve a round of applause in everything they do. I think we have the best of the best here in this town, and we should all show how we appreciate that, which we do. Other than that, Mayor, I want everybody to have a safe weekend, and don't remember Valentine's Day is coming up. Remember that. Don't forget it. Remember. That's all I have today.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Committeeman Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just touching on what Nikki said, the Fort River Methodist Church, ten-year anniversary, congratulations. You know, like we say, time just flies by. It's amazing how quick it was since they took over that church over on Lacy Road. But to the members there, they're a great group of individuals. The pastors are fantastic women. Unfortunately, I won't be at the ceremony on Sunday. My kids are out of town, and I'm watching my one-year-old for the next four days, so I will be there. But I wish, you know, everyone the best if you just pass my apologies on. Just a few things I mentioned at the last meeting. Child's safety seat, we're having a child's safety seat inspection next Wednesday night, February fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, from four p.m. to seven p.m. at the Lenoka Harbor Firehouse. If you have the ability to get over there and you have a new child, a new infant, it's well worth it, go over and let the officers inspect the seat, make sure it's put into the car properly, because it could certainly save a life being in there right. So, next Wednesday night, four to seven at Lenoka Harbor. The Police Explorer Program, which I mentioned at the last couple meetings, if you know anybody that's interested in getting into a law enforcement career down the road, this is really a great program. The chief developer is going to be putting together this year to bring kids that age fourteen to twenty into a situation where they're basically training to become police officers at a later point in their life. You have to take and get involved in the program prior to turning the age of eighteen. So if you're interested, you can still pick up applications over at the police department. Just go into the front desk, and they'll give you an application, get it back to us, because we're starting to get to the point where it's going to be kicking in the program. But if you have any inclinations of going into law enforcement, it really is something good to get involved in. The county sheriff, Master Nardi, also has a program up there, which we work hand-in-hand with, so the kids will get a lot of good experience if they get involved. The chief also wanted me to mention, we're having a lot of problems in town with people setting up different types of scams, whether it be with our seniors, young people, old people, doesn't make much of a difference. There's a lot of people out there that would like to take advantage of people, so he's looking to get the word out to the different organizations in town that his officers himself would be happy to come out and do presentations to any group that would like to have a presentation done on how to avoid being scammed. If you're interested in your organization having a presentation, you just call the police department chief, the developer. His number is six oh nine, six nine three, six six three six, and that's extension two five six seven. It's really a great program. If you, you know, I've seen him put it on, I've heard the officers doing it, really gives you a world of information. It'd be very helpful in avoiding any kind of scam, you know, down the road, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Committeeman Quinn. Committeeman Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. This week, I had a chance to attend the State Planning Commission, along with Committeeman Quinn, Veronica, and our business administrator, Chris Reed.
Excuse me? Business administrator?
Chris Reed? Where is it? Who are the business administrators? Yeah, whichever, you know what I meant. Everybody knows what I meant.
You and I are still sick.
I said Veronica, anyway.
Yes, you did.
So, the goal, and right now, we're in the process of trying to receive town center designation, and with that, we would be able to increase our impervious coverage, and the goal is to really, to get that designation along our commercial corridors, both Lacy Road and Route nine. And hopefully, if we're successful, that will enable, encourage more development along those areas to help offset the eventual closure of the power plant. And I also just would like to add that I spend a lot of these business meetings with Committeeman Quinn, and he always represents the town very well at these meetings. I'm always thoroughly impressed, his knowledge in the town, and just how he's able to sell the town. In particular, at this past meeting, we were meeting with about twelve different representatives from the state, and all different departments, and I always appreciate Gary's knowledge in these situations, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Committeeman Kennas. Committeeman McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Some sad news, we all know about it, but his funeral will be taking place on Saturday, Shep Moore. Shep was a member of the Board of Adjustments for, I'm going to say, fifteen to twenty years. I think he was a councilman, too.
Yes, he was, back in the sixties.
Back in the sixties. What a finer gentleman you couldn't find. He worked with me on the Board of Adjustment in shaping the undersized lots. He had some great ideas on that. And my guess is he'll always be go down noted for on the Board of Adjustments, as he was the one guy at the end of the meeting, when these undersized lots would get built, you go, okay, well, how many sheets of plywood are you going to put in the attic? And no matter what, the contractor said, he'd say, I'll put six. You're going to put eight in. Okay, I'll put eight in. Whatever it was, there was something, he always added a couple extra to it, so I just wanted to bring that up, and that's at ten o'clock on Saturday, again, at the Lacy United Methodist Church here on Lacy Road. I was hoping to get a text from our recreation director before this, but I'm going to go ahead and announce it, and if he doesn't pull it off, I might have to look for the new recreation director. The Bayfront Park, the opening, the B Street Band, which is the band that pulled out of the inauguration, we're, I'm going to say we're ninety-five percent sure that they're going to be there. And last night, I was attending a function, and I saw the lieutenant governor, and asked her if she would also attend, and we're going to get on the calendar. Obviously, she's going to be real busy, so we'll see what happens with that. But that's going to be a big, I'm hoping for a big affair there, so. And I think that's all I've got, Mayor.
Mayor McDonald, much appreciated. Thank you. I'd like to open my comments tonight by saying I certainly agree primarily with what's already been said tonight, and in particular with the Lacy United Methodist Church. They've been fine partners in our community. Anytime that somebody had an issue with addiction or homelessness, Reverend Applegate was there. I know that factually, I was on the other side of some of those phone calls. And I think people at the county, people all around Lacy Township, regardless of where you live, we're there for her, and I think people in this town have large hearts, and it's very evident in the work you see Pastor Applegate do, and being an integral part of our municipal alliance. I also want to thank our deputy mayor for swearing in the Lacy Underwater Dive Team. It was very unfortunate, I got a text, I remember the time, it was three twenty-four in the afternoon last Saturday. I had a family member going to the hospital, so I spent most of that time last Saturday evening at Community Medical Center in the ER, and the family member's on the mend now, so I appreciate you standing up, Deputy Mayor, for that. It's much appreciated. I'd like to reiterate some of the comments I heard Committeeman Kennas say about Committeeman Quinn. I have to say and agree with the same exact things in the meetings I've been to at the county or anywhere, and most recently, just earlier before this meeting this evening. Consummate professional, knows the issues, very prepared, and represents this town extremely well, so it's much appreciated. On the thirtieth of January, I had the honor, right in this room, to take the Boy Scouts around and give them a tour, let them sit in our chairs. They enjoyed it. It's one of the great things you get to enjoy as mayor. At times, you feel like you have a target on your chest, but that's what you sign up for, and I have broad shoulders, and I appreciate all the commentary from our residents, good, better, and different. But the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, when I'm able to give them a tour, I'm very appreciative of that. Also, I wanted to update our residents. We did have a budget meeting, February second. Budgets are difficult things, but one thing we, and sometimes there's spirited debate, one thing that I can assure everybody of within earshot of my voice, or eyeshot of my face on television right now, is that we think about the people in the town, and we take extremely seriously any money that we spend on the municipal side. In the years that I've been here, there was one year in the Scacy, right now, we were two hundred and forty thousand dollars down, year over year, and that's with increments, that's with purchases, so I believe we're very responsible and very lean on the municipal side, and I'm very proud to be a small part of that, with people up here that have a lot of experience. I always say there's a lot of academic capital up here, and I'm proud to serve with everyone sitting here. And I'll close tonight with the Rotary Club. Two days ago, I was able to meet with and break bread with at the Captain's Inn, the Rotary Club. Couldn't be a finer civic organization in our town. Of course, they're responsible for Rotary Park at Hebrew Park, and so many, if you haven't seen it, it's beautiful. It'll be beautiful for years. It was because of their charity and their largesse, and I made that known when I gave the township update the other day at Captain's. I'm very grateful to get that invite, and I would like to get it again. Anybody that, if you want to hear any one of us speak, please call six nine three eleven hundred. We'll be there. I'll be there, because we work for you. So without any further questions, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Yes, sir, please come up. Name and address for the record.
Steve McCauley, Hunter Longshire Drive, Lenoka Harbor. I'd like to have like a little Q and A amongst the committee, and you may yourself, if I can.
Yes, sir.
First of all, let me change my lead. Can I go read it?
Yeah. I think you and I spoke the other night.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so that was a message that I got. I had never met you before. One of our secretarial staff put that message in my mailbox. Four hours later, I had called you. We spoke for about a half hour, forty minutes, and so I'm not sure if this is a conversation.
Well, it's going to be in relation to all of that stuff, but again, regarding your conversation that we did have, you stated to me that you were going to get in touch with Gary Quinn, Committeeman Quinn, and discuss what we discussed, and get back to me that night.
Well, I stated that I would address the situation, and I am working on it. It's only been about twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Well, for us, it's been eighteen years, so whatever concerns are, whatever time delay is, it's a little more personal.
I gave you my word, I would work on it, and so please say a piece. I want to.
Well, you didn't get back to me. I don't want to get angry or confrontational, but you said you were going to find out.
It's been forty-eight hours.
Okay, let me just continue.
Yes, sir.
So, as far as the township committee is concerned, what is the structural hierarchy? Who's the top dog?
We are a committee form of government. There's no, as it were, top dog. All of our votes are worth the same. If we, the mayor is fortunate enough to have the support of his or her colleagues. We select the mayor once a year, we do that on our reorg meeting, and we also select the deputy mayor, which we have done on January second of this year. But there's no vote worth more than another.
Okay, so it's pretty much a combination?
Yes, sir, it is.
So, does the administrator have any part of the discussions, of any kind of business that takes place?
On the org chart in the township, our administrator, other than the governing body, is the top part of that organization chart.
Okay. All right, now, numerous calls I have made to the township over the years when I want to address one of the committees, and being the new faces I haven't discussed, but I've always told that they're out, they're not in the office, they have second jobs, and so on, so we'll leave the message. So now, with the absence of a committee person, or you yourself, the mayor, who is in charge of the daily operations in the town hall?
We have department heads that are in charge of different things in town hall. We have department heads that are in charge of land use, we have department heads that are in charge of code enforcement, budgets and financial issues, certified municipal financial officers.
Is there anyone over those departments?
It would be the administrator, the ray.
So it would be township, okay. All right, just what you described before with hiring temporary workers and such, one of the things I have to touch on, who does the hiring of employees in the township? Is it done through an application process?
Application process, or it could be off of a civil service exam, and the governing body then makes the appointments.
Okay, now, civil service would contain to maybe just the police department?
No, we are all civil service.
Okay.
We are all under some form of civil service. Some are competitive, some are non-competitive jobs. It depends on the level of the job.
Okay, supervisory positions in the town hall?
Some are competitive, some are non-competitive.
Okay, and then you would have jurisdiction on the hiring of those individuals?
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. They do. They do. I don't. Hiring and firing comes from them.
Okay, and then who administer a letter of determination, say, disciplinary action?
It could be delivered by the governing body or myself. But it would be on there.
Well, more likely, who would it come from if they determined that a disciplinary action has to take place or file?
Well, again, each department head can issue their own disciplinary action against an employee that they oversee.
Well, say if it's a, say if it's a department head or supervisor himself.
Again, there's a process through civil service that you have to file forms.
What if it's a non-civil service person?
There's no non-civil service people here. We are all civil service. All of our positions are civil service, and there's guidelines through civil service that have to be filed. And there's 12 different reasons as to why you can discipline an employee. And then there's forms to be filled out, and then they have rights to hearings, and, you know, courts of law to dispute that, if, you know, depending on what the severity of the discipline is, whether it's a written warning, a verbal warning, versus days off with, without pay, and so on and so forth. And there's also six different unions in here that also have a play in this that also go in line with the civil service process. So, it's a double-edged sword to us.
It's a big process.
Yeah, it is.
And Mr. McCauley, if I could, just for one second, I didn't call you back yet, that's true. And like I said, it's only been 48 hours. I called you four or five hours after I got the message. But what I also did is I did speak to Committeeman Quinn. I am working on your issue. I also spoke to Mr. Reed downstairs. So, I'm.
Did you get verification from Mr. Reed, as what I mentioned to you, as far as that goes? Did he verify the comments that I was discussing with you?
These are ongoing discussions. I'm trying to address your issue. It can't be done sometimes in two days.
Mr. Reed hasn't been in work this week. He spent, he hasn't, he wasn't in work yesterday or today, and Tuesday, he was in Trenton with us. So, Mr. Mayor Kurtolow might have had trouble getting in touch with him.
Well, it wasn't Mr. Reed, it was Mr. Quinn that the mayor said he was gonna get in touch.
I spoke to, yeah, I spoke to the mayor, and I gave him a background on, you know, 'cause I've been involved over the last couple of years.
And I understand, and I appreciate it. And you, along with Steve Kennas, too, as the zoning meetings we've been to over the past several years. But that's one of my concerns, too, with that. I also called and left a message for you.
I've been sick.
It's been over a week already.
Well, no, you called my office. Matter of fact, you come into my.
Well, I thought, yes, that was prior to what I called last Thursday. I called the town hall here. Lisa said you were gonna put a message in your box. I called back.
When I go in tonight, I'll check it, but I've been sick for the last.
You haven't checked it yet? Well, yeah, I'm the same boat as you.
I apologize, yeah. But I've dealt with you for the last two or three years, and I always call.
You know my concerns, but that's secondary to why I'm here tonight.
I understand.
And it goes to a situation that I had with an individual who works at this township. So, it's an ongoing investigation, and I'll just leave it go with that. If you, you know, you wanna continue the investigation, or you want to continue with what?
You had, you had called me. Today's Thursday. I think the pink note in my mailbox said 11:05 a.m.
Yes, no, I appreciate it. You did call me back.
I called you back.
Rather quickly, yes, yes.
And, and I gave you my word that I had the intention of calling you back. I didn't know you'd be here tonight to discuss anything in a public forum.
Well, because I didn't hear back from you or Mr. Quinn, I figured.
Mr. McCauley, respectfully, and I'm not trying to escalate things. I've been trying to work with you. I wanna come back to you with the product that I thoroughly researched. 48 hours just wasn't enough time. Now, the administrator, you heard her say that Mr. Reed was out sick. He's part of it. You had mentioned that. So, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get information for you and give you a satisfactory answer. You may not like the answer, but, but, but I'm working on it right now.
I just didn't wanna let, anytime elapsed before I heard anything from anyone concerning this event.
If I tell you I'm gonna call you back.
Because it's rather disturbing.
If, if, if somebody wants me to speak, if somebody has a question, if somebody wants that forum with me in a meeting, you're gonna get it.
And Steve, just one thing, because the mayor is engaged in the conversation with the issues with you, I wouldn't get involved in it, because he's the face of the committee, even though we all vote the same amount of power, you know. So, he would come to me, he would go to Mr. Kennas, and get the information from us, and then he would, you know, continue to deal with the issue himself.
Well, it was on my advice. I suggested to the mayor, because again, not, you know, taking anything from your position.
Sure.
But just as everybody has said, you know more about this than anyone.
Yeah, he reached out to me right away, and I gave him the history of the entire thing, so he's aware of what has gone on on that side, so.
All right, now, as far as finally a complaint against a township employee, how does that take place, and who do I speak to, or how is it formally addressed?
You could speak to any one of the governing body members or myself. So, you can go, like, you call and left messages for either one of the committee members. You could do that, or sometimes people come in and see me.
Well, then analyze the problem.
Well, that person that you're talking about is not allowed to be addressed by me. It goes to the governing body directly. I have no direct line of supervision for him.
Okay, because there could be a conflict of interest.
I have no direct line of supervision to him. He either answers to Mr. Reed or to the governing body, but not to me. And that was day one from when I was put into the position as administrator.
Okay, because I sort of feel that the individual feels impervious to any kind of disciplinary action due to his relationship with.
But I don't supervise him, so.
Well, if you were to write a letter of disciplinary action against.
But I wouldn't be writing that, because I don't supervise.
Those protections, those protections are already in place. That was decided, yes.
So, she wouldn't have a discussion with the individual, i.e. her husband, concerning the disciplinary actions or the complaint that I have.
Mr. McCauley, if you're, if you're gonna talk about and name individual employees, I think that's something that should be done away from.
Well, this is why I just, how do I file a complaint?
You're able to write a letter. You're, we will address it, as I am doing now. I just didn't have enough time to do it, because it's been not 48 hours, like I had said.
Well, do I have to write a letter, or does this, as you'll say, commit to talk to any of you?
Whatever you would prefer.
Whatever, whatever you prefer. Whatever you prefer. But to name certain employees here on TV is inappropriate, and on the advice of council, probably something that shouldn't be done.
We're not gonna discuss personnel matters.
Exactly.
On our end, we're not gonna discuss it.
Well, I was just concerned with the conflict of interest.
Right. It's Mr. Reed, contact Mr. Reed, his is direct supervisor. So, if you want, if you were uncomfortable addressing any one of us.
Well, I have no problem addressing any.
We're writing a letter. It would, I would say, you know, it would be Mr. Reed.
And that he can send it up.
That's his supervisor.
That's the direct supervisor.
That's his direct supervisor, then he can send it up to Chaney, Mayor, Mr. Reed.
Well, when we have discussions with Mr. Reed, it always reverts back to Gary. I don't wanna, you know, say, "Okay, Gary," because Gary does know more than any of you along with Mr. Kennas about what's taking place. And after 18 years of this situation, we feel.
Why don't you do, I understand, we try to direct them to the department heads, but being that you've already spoken to the mayor, why don't you just put a letter and write and send it to the mayor? It's gonna make it up to the mayor anyway, so. Then we'll just, at least we can handle it, but we don't, you know, you can mention their own names of every employee that works for the township, but we won't respond.
Well, I didn't mention any names.
No, I know that, yeah, yeah. That's what the lawyers just tried to say.
Yeah, I didn't mention anybody's.
Yeah, 'cause we have guidelines, too, that we have to abide by when it comes to civil service.
But, so then I would come, and when would I see you? Because again, nobody sees you during the day. My clock is free, so.
You can leave a letter, and we're, we're.
You can leave it with the ladies in the clerk's office, and the committee members all have mailboxes.
Exactly right. And just like I called you a few hours after I got the last letter, I'll read the letter that you submit.
He's in usually every evening after his, on his way home from work.
Where I'm in during the day, sometimes if I make the time and have the opportunity, which is the case.
All right, I'll address a little bit to yourself, to the seal level, and addressing my concerns.
If you wanna meet and have a discussion, I'm amenable to that as well.
It's not only myself, as Gary knows. There's at least half a dozen, if not more, neighbors with the concerns we have.
I promise you I would do that, and I have no issue with doing that.
All right. Okay, I'll format that letter, get it over to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bender. Please come forward.
Harry Bender, historic Bay Avenue, as promised. Just wanna remind, February 23rd, 7:00 p.m., Milton School. We have our Relay for Lights kickoff. I'll probably be out this weekend, and I think it's gonna get cold again on this weekend, so I'm really looking forward to that. Flyering different stores, et cetera, with our flyers, but we wanna remind everybody that 23rd is kickoff, and then we go full, actually, we go full speed since last.
Well, you know how, and if I can interject, you know how the five of us support that. I mean, and it's part of my career, and we've all been touched by cancer. The 23rd, however, is not only a budget meeting, it's a regular television meeting as well.
Regular township meeting we have at night.
And so that.
I won't be here.
It's a scheduling. When the township meeting concludes, if you're still in session over there, I'd be absolutely planning on being by. So, I wanna address our people as well.
What time is our night?
7 o'clock.
Okay.
7:00 p.m. is when we start.
All right, where do you usually do, a lot of the businesses hang their posters up for you?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I take from Lacey Road to the southern end of town. Other people do other parts, so. And then there's another group that does Lacey Road, and then people do Berkeley Township, so. But I was hoping, I was hoping that the weekend would be like yesterday more than today, if you know what I'm saying.
Are you gonna put signs out for your kickoff, or no?
Starting, we can start on Mon, Monday? Is that the right day?
Yeah.
'Cause I got a note that.
You can start today. Wait, 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 the 16th, the 16th.
Which is.
Next Thursday.
Oh, next Thursday. Okay, so the signs are ready. They're sitting on somebody's porch.
Yeah, okay.
They're already going up in Berkeley Township, and then next Thursday.
I've been in recent contact with Carmen Amato, not last Saturday evening. I know he's gonna attend. We will do a proclamation. You will have.
He has a team. You guys wanna put together a team?
Listen, you're gonna have our lock.
Mayor's team leader.
Lockstep support. You will have it, and we will be there.
Appreciate it. But I wanna get the word out, in case people haven't seen last meet, well, last meeting, we were televised, but this meeting, we're televised, so I wanna get it out there, so people out in TV land get the word that the 23rd is the day.
All right, did you put it on our signs over on Manchester?
Yes.
I don't read it, I just.
Well, I go by, you know, if you don't hit it at the right time.
We're checking our website right now.
No, I'm gonna check now, no.
Well, Channel 21 has it up. As a matter of fact, somebody called me up to make sure it was coming up, and at the moment she called me, I was going through the channels and hit Channel 21, and it was right there. I was like, that's a sign.
We're gonna, we're gonna leave a note for our IT tomorrow. We'll have it on lacytownship.org.
I'll have it tracked under events, under the events on the website.
Wonderful, appreciate that.
That's a home run. We get a lot of traffic on that website.
Committeeman Quinn mentioned scams, and it's funny he should mention that, 'cause I got a note, actually a Facebook thing, from my cousin in Oklahoma, wanna talk about a scam. You gotta be careful what you say on the telephone now.
Oh, yeah.
Because people are calling up, and they're asking a question, and when you answer "yes," they're recording the word "yes," and they're using it to get into your accounts. I wanna share that out to everybody. I couldn't believe that was the first one.
Close to me.
That my cousin in Oklahoma.
It was done when I owned the business down here. Somebody called, and somebody on the phone answered "yes," and it gave them authorization to tap into my checking account.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes. So, I just wanted to make people, if you answer the phone and it's not somebody you know, do not use a positive "yes" saying, "Who are you?" or "What are you calling for?" Or whatever.
With my voice.
But don't use that positive. And a final thing I just wanted to mention, 10 years at that location, I wanna thank Pastor Applegate extremely, because during that hurricane, they were the savior of this town. I'm sorry, they were the savior of this town, and I recognize that all the time, that without, without them, there would have been a sorry situation here. And I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Any further comment?
Seeing that, I make a motion to close the floor.
Make sure I get about, about eight of them posted.
For the relay?
Posters for the relay?
Oh, you want eight posters?
Eight of them.
All right, where do you wanna bring them?